Okay, so we have, so just for the recording, we have opened the planning board meeting, the Heath Planning Board meeting at 7:02 for February 10th, and we have now just opened the, the, the public hearing for Alchemy at 11 Bela Road for a marijuana facility. We opened that at 7:05. So there's a couple of things that Sue alluded to. We did have a lot of discussion. I want everybody to be heard, but there are things that we discussed last week, like the community host agreement and the septic, which are not in the planning board's purview. We don't, we don't regulate those things. The select board is, it was in charge and has come up with an agreement with, with all four companies that, that is the community host agreement. And if we have issues with those, with those agreements, then we need to go to the select board to discuss them. And the same thing with the septic, they're, you know, the, the, the Board of Health and FERCog are going to, they're in charge of enforcement here, so they're not going to let anything terrible happen. Also, the, the Conservation Commission is, also has their own, the things that they regulate, and the, the planning board doesn't regulate those things. So, let me just look through my notes here and see if there's more that we can take off the table. So, so, go ahead, Bill.
Bob? You want Bob to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Also, the whole issue of the charity, that is not in our purview. That was discussed, charitable contribution.
Right.
Is in this select, Board of Selectmen's purview, not, not in the planning board.
Right, and, and actually, just for, for clarity's sake, who gets the money for the charitable contributions is not in the, the Board of Selectmen's purview. It's just in the community host agreement that they will give a certain amount of money to charitable, a minimum certain amount of money to charities. So personally, I think we should, you know, if somebody wants to go to the select board and say, hey, we should have a, a committee that will bring, that will, that will sort through the needs of the community and present that to the marijuana companies, I think that's fine, but that's what would have to happen. You know, a, a group of citizens should go to the select board and suggest a committee that would suggest charities. Now, that, that committee will not be in charge of deciding who gets any money. That's entirely up to the giver. It has nothing to do with anybody else. So the, so they've agreed that they're going to give a certain amount to charity, and they are open to, to doing that. So, let me, let me, let Ryan, Ryan, do you want to comment on that at all? Are you good with the summary that I just gave?
I, I think the summary you gave is great, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, so, does anybody else have questions about that procedurally? So now I will, let's, let me open it up to just the, the planning board for just a minute and see if there are any other questions that you had for Alchemy. Now, this is Alchemy's public hearing, so if anybody has, first, first the planning board, does anybody, any of you guys have anything else you want to ask of?
Sorry Doug, just a, just a very simple question. Who is the CEO or president, or whatever the right term is for Alchemy?
I, I am Peter.
You are, Ryan? Okay, thank you.
Doug, Sue has her hand up, Sue Gruen.
Okay, wait a minute, I'm, first I'm doing, I'm gonna call on her, but first I'm gonna see if any of the planning board members, any other planning board members have anything that further that they want to ask? Or should I open up to?
Bob, no.
Okay, Bill, go ahead, you got unmute.
You have to unmute, Bill.
He is, he's done it.
There, sorry. So, again, I apologize for not being at the last meeting for your public hearing. I'm just wondering if you, I assume that you've gone through the list of things that need to be presented for approval by the planning board, and wondering if there's any, any issues that came up at the last meeting that were, were an issue, or that need to be talked about anymore, or did you get through them all?
No, we got, we looked at, we looked at the sketch of where everything was going to be.
Is that, is that this one?
There, there's actually a newer one, I can put it up on the screen for a minute. I'm happy to do that. Actually, this is it. It's a little, just graphically, it's a little easier to read.
Oh, yeah.
And we're talking about Alchemy, which is the top one. And I, yeah, so that's, this isn't, this is a newer version, I did just send you this 15 minutes, 15 minutes ago, you got this one.
Okay.
And now that we have, now that these are the kind of the final ones, I will post all of these on the website tomorrow morning.
So this hatched area to the, to the east, what is, I can't, it's not at a size that I can read.
It says undisturbed ground.
Oh, okay.
And?
Does that have to do with wetlands?
Ryan, does that have to do with wetlands?
Actually, so Joe O. and Tom Bocham are, are both in this call. Tom or Joe, do you want to speak to the specifics there?
Yes, that area has pockets of wetland, and we were just going to leave it undisturbed. So, to answer your question, yes, that's why that's hashed out. We will not be constructing in that area.
Okay, thanks, I just, my phone was, battery was dying, I realized that the charger wasn't plugged in, so, okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Doug, do you show anyone in the waiting room?
I'm trying, I'm actually, now that I shared my screen, I'm trying to get back to that. And, why am I not?
You're doing a great job, Doug. I don't want your, I don't want your job.
I actually had to stop sharing to be able to get back to the waiting room. There is Jay Goldhammer, is Gord Hammer, is in the waiting room, and he is now joining Okay, let me, I'll go back to sharing the screen and I'll try to keep that checked. All right, can you see the screen, you guys? Can you see the, the drawing, I mean?
Yep.
All right. Bill, do you have any more questions about the drawing?
I, I appreciate the clarification, that's the area that contains some wetlands, and I understand that those are really the purview of the Conservation Commission. Have, have those issues been resolved?
I will let Joe, or whoever wants to, from Alchemy, but, but they have to be resolved, this is not something that we have anything to do with. They do have to be resolved before they can build anything.
Okay.
But that's not the planning board's job.
Yeah.
I don't want to talk about it for a long time tonight.
Well, that's all right, I, I withdraw my question.
And, okay, let me, let me open it up to the citizens now. Sue, you had your hand up, Sue Gruen.
Thank you, Doug. I wasn't quite sure, I did have a, a couple of questions. What is Ry, Ryan, what's your last name?
Yep, it's Yunt, J-U-N-D-T.
D-T. And Ryan, do you represent all the, does Alchemy represent all of the farms, or just the one farm?
No, yeah, all I represent is, is Alchemy. Alchemy is its own business and its own farm.
Okay, and so these are two quick questions. When you talk about charitable foundations?
Wait a minute, Sue, hang on a second, Sue. The charitable contributions are under the purview of the select board, not the planning board.
Sure, I understand that. So can I just ask the one question? Have you awarded, Ryan, any money so far?
Have I given any money to any charities? No.
You have not given any money whatsoever. Thank you, that's all.
You're welcome.
Doug, I had a question as well. There were some issues last time about the dates on the, the contracts, and I was wondering if that had been solved, if they'd been rewritten, or, or how did that, what transpired with those issues?
The lawyer, the lawyers on both sides have agreed that they have a community host agreement, and the planning board can't do anything about the community host agreement. So we, we can talk about all kinds of things, but not the community host agreement, and not the septic system, and not the wells, because that's already, that's, we have laws and rules that, that already take care of us at that level.
Okay, I was just wondering if they'd been resolved or not, so.
Yeah, they, they have. I got an email that says that they have. I got, and also got an email, by the way, that said that their septic system, that the existing septic system has passed, but might need a new actual tank. But, so anyway, that's, that's not for us to talk about tonight, I'm afraid.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else, especially someone who has not had a chance to talk yet? Sheila Litchfield, go ahead.
Hi there, I'm the Heath MLP manager for broadband, and I'm just kind of curious, I'll have, I'll have the same question for all four companies. If you, I'm just curious if you're going to need broadband service.
Yeah, we definitely want broadband service. Two good people on, on the, on the call are Tom Bochamp and Joe O. They're handling all the construction for, for the entire development. So, yeah, so as a, as a last see there, I definitely want broadband.
Great, thank you so much.
Let me just, I'll tell you guys one other thing, in case you didn't know, I have posted, I've posted the recording of our first meeting in its entirety on the planning board webpage. So if there's stuff that we went over a lot, we did not talk about broadband, but if there's stuff that we talked about, I'll just let you know that you can hear it all right there.
Right, thanks.
All right, is there anybody else who would like to talk? You can use your, raise your hand. Bob, you still got your hand up, you want to have another question? Yeah, go ahead, Bob. No? Okay. All right, how about, oh, there's, oh, we have one new person coming. And for the record, actually, I just need to know who Lenny is. Are you there, Lenny? I just let Lenny in, but I don't know who he is, so we need it for the, for our roll Are you there, Lenny?
Is Lenny muted?
No, Lenny's not muted. All right, well.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, Lenny, what is your last name, and are you a Heath resident?
O-D-E-A, resident.
One more time, you got cut off.
O-D-E-A.
Welcome, Lenny, thanks, just needed that for the records. And actually, while I'm on that, I want to just double check that we don't have, that we know everybody else. And who is Timothy? Timothy, are you with us? Oh, Timothy's.
Timothy is, Timothy is Joe.
Oh, Timothy is Joe, oh, okay.
Yep, no, Ryan, he's Ryan.
He's Ryan, okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Gloria.
Yeah, I, I just changed that, Doug, I, I apologize.
Oh, okay, all right.
My son was using, using my Zoom last night, so I apologize.
All right. I'm, I'm just gonna zip through here, I just want to make sure. And Tom, Tom, what's your last name again? Is, can you change that, put your last name in?
I, I can try. It's Tom.
Just spell your last name, that's all.
It's B-E-A-U. Oh, we're doing it right now, here we go, like, figured out, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
There you go, excellent, okay. Now I think we know who everybody is. All right, anybody else have any questions, especially for Ryan, which is, which is Alchemy?
I think Gloria has her hand up.
Oh, Gloria, go, go for it, Gloria.
Thank you, I'm curious, on previous meeting, it was discussed that the crops would be grown, they would be brought into a building, and put into five or 10 pound bags and taken away. Is there any processing going on? I remember back way in the beginning that there was some talk of, like, maybe making edibles or doing something to that effect?
Yeah, but I appreciate the question, so, to be clear, here we are, our, our HCA is for both outdoor cultivation and manufacturing. Current state for myself and Alchemy, for a season especially, we plan to, to use the building to do exactly what we discussed before, which is harvest, process that material, possibly prepack that material, maybe into smaller bags than, than five, 10 pound bags, but unlikely. So no current plans for making edibles and things like that, but in the future, we do have that manufacturing license in our, in our agreement, but anything that would happen with that would happen within the, within the building, not, not exterior of the building.
Thank you.
Doug?
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
I remember that manufacturing was in the request, but if we approve this, that area is not zoned for manufacturing, in the sense that it's, it's a whole different issue than agricultural use. And I, I am a little concerned about that happening, since it was so controversial when we had the issue of manufacturing at the school building.
Yeah, Bob, good question, Doug, if you don't mind, I can give some color to this. We, we actually had a fair amount of conversation with town council on this matter when we went through the HCA, and the best thing that, that I would equate it to is apple orchard, where you squeeze the apple into apple cider that comes right off the orchard. We need manufacturing in order to do some of the prepacking things that we want to do. I think the next likely thing that, that we might do would be to make pre-rolls, or, you know, put it into jars versus five, five pound bags. When we say manufacturing, we're not looking for a big production. Currently, we're just looking to more or less process the material that we have on site to get it out the door. So we, we feel like it goes hand in hand with the agricultural component.
Did that answer your question, Bob?
If that's what it's limited to, yes.
I'm just wondering, you know, if this is not zoned as a manufacturing area in the town, is there actually a definition in the town bylaws of what manufacturing consists of?
I can look it up, oh, I can't do that.
Is this, is this going on in Zone A or Zone D?
Well, it's by, Zone, everything on the road is Zone A.
A, yeah.
Unless it's B or C, but this is, this would be A.
So it's not further back on the lot into zone D?
Certainly, certainly processing anything would be in those buildings which are shown You're, you're looking it up, Bill?
I'm trying to.
Hang on, I have a hard copy here.
Yeah, I've got a hard copy. So industrial, manufacturing, processing, laboratories, they're all allowed in Zone A by special permit. Same with warehousing, bulk storage, those are, those uses.
I, I understand, I understand that they're allowed by special permit, that's not why I raised the question. I raised the question because if you start manufacturing beyond what was just described by Ryan, then I think there needs to be more conversation before the special permit is issued. That's, that's why I raised it.
So do you want to, do you want to, do you want to put in as a condition, what kind of processing is going to happen?
I, I think it's crucial we do that.
Okay.
If at some future time, they want to go beyond that, then we have another special permit issue.
Let me ask you, Ryan, do you, do you, or any of your team, do you guys want to try to explain, like, do you want to try to explain what it is, what all you need to do, in a way that we can just put that in?
If I could throw out two, two thoughts, one is that it would be incidental to the agriculture, you know, we would not be bringing in other product or things.
Who's talking?
It's Chris.
Am I muted? Okay.
No, no, you're talking, I just couldn't see who was, I didn't see who was talking.
So it would be incidental to the agriculture that were performing in the barn. So I, they use the term manufacturing or processing, but these are not conventional manufacturing or processing as they're known outside of cannabis. So I think the term kind of adds a bit of confusion that maybe should kind of get cleared up, it's a bit of a misnomer. The second thing to point out to the community is the HCAs have a term on them. So if there's something that is happening or could happen that is not agreeable to the community, you, you obviously have the, the renewal of the HCA to control for that. So that would be my only comment, I think, to try to put language together on what kind of processing of the agricultural product we're going to do, it would be very difficult, particularly in this venue, versus, one, understanding that, again, it's just, it's just incidental to the agricultural work we're doing, and two, you have the host community HCA agreement term as a, as a stop, as a stopgap to renegotiate anything, or to whatever additional parameters you see necessary in the future.
All right, let me, let me just call on Phil, it sounded like you wanted to add something, and then you, Bob.
I'm just trying to understand, do I understand this to be Zone A where manufacturing is allowed?
Yes.
Okay, so, just, I, I think we should be clear, and then maybe if we need to discuss further, we can discuss further. What, what was, I think the initial plans are just to take the product, they may put it in bags, they may roll it into joints, things like that, that, I, I think that is truly incidental. It is possible that in the future, they would also like to go a little further into what's called extraction, extracting the oils, and then perhaps even creating products, whether it be edibles, or topical ointments, or vaporizers, et cetera. I believe both of those, if, if I'm understanding you, those, those might be more better termed manufacturing. I think it's allowed in this zone, I think they're asking for it, and if you'd like to hear, get a better understanding of how it works, we can give you that, but I think they'd like to have that option in the future, so why don't we discuss it now?
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
So I think the permit, my, my proposal is that the permit issue at this time be incidental, as, as the words were used, incidental to the agricultural project. I really don't think that we want to decide right now, since it's in the future, that they can start manufacturing when the town by majority vote voted against doing that.
Okay.
Again, is it Zone, I, I'm not sure what you're referring to by the vote, it, it is zoned for manufacturing.
It's by special permit.
Which is part of what they're seeking here, a special permit.
Right, and the planning board is the board that would issue a special permit. So, I'm not quite clear what Bob is suggesting, but we in the special permit could specify specific uses, if in the future, the companies wanted to go further than what's, what we end up approving, if we do approve, I'm guessing that the companies would need to come back for a special permit for the expanded uses.
I, I kind of echo the same question respectfully that, that Phil posed. Our understanding, when we went through the HCAs, it is zoned for manufacturing. And another thing just to add is, when we talk manufacturing, the existing building that's there, behind those four walls, of course, legal, you know, by, by state and legal by town code, everything that we'd be doing, but nothing comes out of that. So the difference between packaging and, and into a jar, making ointment or extracting, which extraction has multiple forms, it can be as simple as ice water that you soak your cannabis in, and it can be as complex as, as BHO extraction, but still, all of that happens within those four walls, there's no, effectively no change to the view, sound, anything in the community. And, and again, I echo the question that Phil had, if it is in fact zoned for manufacturing, I, I just don't understand how, how that's, that's limiting, I guess.
And not to, kind of, not to keep pounding this drum, but it's not manuf- And not to, kind of, not to keep pounding this drum, but it's not manufacturing in the conventional sense. We would only be processing our own product. It's not, I think manufacturing by definition involves bringing in other things and assembling them and putting them together, whereas this would literally just be processing our own product, similar to like an apple orchard, turning the apples into cider. I mean, this is not what I would call manufacturing outside of the cannabis terminology.
If we can, it might help if we gave you a bit of a description of how this works. I think we've started to, but what we're talking about here, and I think this was requested in the application for the special permit, is to both cultivate and do product manufacturing, which is sort of a term of art in the Massachusetts cannabis industry. It's a separate license that you operate under. So generally, what you're doing in that is you're taking the plant, the flower, and you are finding a way to get the oil out of that flower. And as it was said, I mean, for example, one way is as simple as a press. You press the plant together, the oil comes out, you collect that oil, and you might put it into a vaporizer pen. You might put it into a brownie. But it's, this is not major, a major, you know, procedure. It's a fairly simple process. There's a couple different ways, you know, that it's done generally. But we're not talking about anything that significantly increases the activity on the property at all. You know, each farm would probably have a couple, one or two employees that would be dedicated to this. And it's among the products that you would wholesale to other companies in Massachusetts. You'd wholesale some flour, you might wholesale a brownie, you might wholesale a topical ointment or a beverage. That's the type of thing, you know, that we're talking about here, pretty small scale. But I think they would like the option, and they did ask for it as a part of the special permit, which I'm understanding is required in order to do manufacturing.
I kind of, I'll let you go next, Bill, but just, I personally feel that as long as it's happening inside that building, it's, to me, it's different kinds of packaging. This is not smoke stacks and, you know, big parking lots full of extra people. This is, it's very small scale. It's more like, it's, I think the apple cider, if you can make cider, can you make jelly? And I think also, I personally feel that we need to, you know, if they don't make money, we don't make money. So where are, the money we get is specifically tied to the percentage of what they, what income they get, and we get a percentage of that. So I look at it as part of a business that we're investing in. But I'll listen, let's go around the board. Bill Brand, you had your hand up before.
Well, I agree with you, Doug. And it seems to me that we, we give the special permit, the special permit has been requested. We can specify what uses are approved under the special permit. It sounds like from what we're discussing, that none of this is any kind of major manufacturing. I guess, it also seemed to me that the last marijuana establishment that was, came to Heath was, the issue was more of the selling of the building rather than what was going to go on inside the building. And I'm just, I guess I'm not concerned as long as we just specify in our special permit approval, if we do approve the special permit, that we just maybe list either specifically or in general terms, the uses that we're permitting.
Can I just make a suggestion? Here's like the guarantees, there would be no change in sound, there'd be no change in smell, there'd be no change in exterior of the building, there'd be no smoke stacks coming out of the top, and there would be no real increase in foot traffic or employees. Like, those are all very things, things I think, you know, the community would care about, that would not happen.
And not to keep going on about this, but, you know, I harvest maple syrup as, in a part of my other agricultural operation. Of course, when you boil the syrup, you have the arch and you have the smoke stack that comes out and you have the fire. I mean, that is a much more invasive activity than, which obviously is widely accepted, of course, in agriculture than this would be. I mean, this would literally be an unknown, you know, it'd just be part of us, you know, incidental to our product and just processing our product. And the, we don't, you know, we don't know where the market is going with everything. It might be that, you know, right now, we might go to sell biomass, you know, all of our product to someone else who will handle the extraction. That's our plan for the first year. Next year, that might not be a viable option in the marketplace. We might need to handle extraction ourselves to be competitive. So, you know, that's just the thoughts here. I'm just, you know, there's, I don't look at this at all as invasive or an issue for the, and we're not bringing any other products in. I mean, it's really, again, just processing our material.
Peter, your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I basically agree with the points that Ryan and Chris have made. I don't think this is going to be any worse than processing maple syrup, and plenty of that goes on in Heath every spring. And I guess maybe we just need to put a sentence or something in the special permit that says, if anything, materials should change in terms of environmental activity. In other words, what's going on in the environment around the farms, then there will be occasion for further conversation about this.
It does, it does say in our bylaws, it says that they have to give us MSDS sheets for anything that they bring in, like if they have to bring in some kind of chemical to do some extraction, then that would, we would be notified of that.
Right, okay, well, that's.
It's already there.
And furthermore, if we brought equipment in or anything else, your building department would have to approve all of that. You know, if we brought, if we decided to add anything to the building later.
Right.
Joe, you want to add anything?
No, I think I'm good with it as they're describing. I don't see a problem.
Okay, Bob, I'll give you the last word, because it was your question.
Okay, I see where the sentiment is. I was a little confused by what you said, Doug, that if they don't make money, we don't make money. Do we get a percentage?
We get a percentage, we get, I think, well, I'll let, well, that goes back to the, it goes back to talking about the community host agreement, but it's my understanding.
I don't want to know the specifics, I just want to know the concept.
Yeah, I think the concept is that we get 1.5% and we get a minimum and a maximum beyond that 1.5%. Is that right, Phil?
I believe that's the case. It's, these are what are called community impact fees. They are something, under Massachusetts law, most businesses, you know, the town doesn't get to collect these types of fees from a company. But in the specific case of marijuana, the law actually allows what are called impact fees. They're fees to compensate the town for impacts upon the town, whether it's use of the roads or the need for additional monitoring or administrative functions of the local, you know, government to sort of keep an eye on these things. What you're doing tonight, you know, in asking questions and monitoring and looking into this. All the, you're allowed to collect fees from these companies under Massachusetts law. And we believe, I think, I wasn't actually involved in the negotiations of the specifics, but I think if I understand it, it's, you get 1.5% of their revenues from this with a minimum of $25,000 a year and a maximum of $75,000 a year. I think that's what it is.
Okay, I see some head shaking. Okay. Are you good, is that, are you good, Bob?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so let me, I'm going to call Bill Fontes and then Kathy Talan.
Thanks, Doug. So let's presume that this special permit is granted. How long, what is the term of it?
Five years.
So I want to know. Thanks.
Kathy?
I think some of the concern that was brought up previously was of, in processing and manufacturing, what happens to the water? What happens to the trash disposal or the giving, putting things back into the ground or back into the creek or back? You know, and how much water is used and how much water is dumped and what's in the water? That kind of stuff was related to manufacturing.
Yeah, Kathy, that's a really good question and a really, really good concern. Really good answer, too. There's no impact whatsoever. All the things that you listed are very typical of normal manufacturing. That's not the case with marijuana. And if I showed you the stringent restrictions that the CCC puts on everything, everything is organic, everything is saved, everything is reused. So believe it or not, there's actually more byproducts in the harvest procedure with the stems, which eventually get ground up and disposed of off-site than in the processing at all.
All right, anybody who I can't see, anybody on the phone, you could speak up if you have a question, if I can't see your hand. All right, and I have one, I have one text from Sheila. Sheila, did you want to just read your question there? Why don't you go and just tell us?
Sure, yeah, I was thinking about when I heard Bob Bierengo speak. But, you know, back when we all dealt with this before, it was so, the question about marijuana in Heath was so closely associated with the sale of Jacob's Road that it's just not possible to know how people are really going to feel, the majority of voters, how they would feel. And then the other piece about it is that things have really changed. There are a number of successful businesses, marijuana businesses in Franklin County that, and towns and communities are really benefiting from this. You know, I just think that, you know, doing it properly and safely has come a long way, and I'm certainly in favor of seeing this happen in Heath, so thank you.
All right, thanks, Sheila. And anyone else want to jump in? All right, seeing no hands, I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing for Alchemy. And we will move on.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I.
Bill, I.
Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Joe, I.
All right, so let the record show that that's unanimous.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep, and thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Ryan.
Okay, so I would now entertain a motion that we begin the public here, we continue the public hearing for True Cannabis, Inc. at 11 Bella Road in Heath, Massachusetts.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, all in favor, Doug, I.
Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Bill, I.
Joe, I.
All right, do we have any discussion for True Cannabis, Inc.?
Well, everyone. This is Chrissy Tuma.
Chris, okay, Chris, are you, are you True Cannabis, Inc.?
I am, thank you.
I'm going to just write that down. All right, and so any further discussion on True Cannabis, Inc.? Don't feel bad, Chris, I'm sure everybody likes you too.
I think Chris is getting off really easy, I'm not sure.
I took the hard part there.
It was nice for Ryan to go first.
All right, let me just check the chat here and make sure that nobody's. Okay, so I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing for True Cannabis, Inc. at 11 Bella Road in Heath, Mass.
So moved.
Second.
Doug, roll call vote, Doug, I.
Peter, I.
Bill, I.
Joe, I.
Did you vote, Bill? Bob, you voted?
I voted aye.
Okay.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Yep.
We appreciate your time and work on this.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to open or to continue the public hearing for the application by Vega Cannabis, Inc. at 11 Bella Road in Heath, Mass. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I.
Bill, I.
Bob, I.
Joe, I.
Peter, I.
Okay, discussion on Vega Cannabis, Inc. I have a question. Who's Vega Cannabis, Inc.?
My name is Mark James. I'm an attorney representing Vega Cannabis, Inc. And I appear on behalf of the company this evening.
Okay. All right, and is there further discussion on the application by Vega Cannabis, Inc.? Seeing no hands, I would entertain a motion to close the public, oh, Bill?
I just wondering if, as we're going through this, we're going through pretty quick, if the attorney for Vegas has any comments or outside of what we've already discussed tonight.
Okay, Mark?
I don't, I've been listening intently to the questions and the answers, and I I fully agree in support with the answers given by Mr. Silverman, Mr. Yount, and Mr. Utuma as to questions that have been posed. I don't have anything to add. I think they've answered the questions, in my opinion, very sufficiently.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for VY, oh, this was. Vega, to close the public hearing for Vega Cannabis, Inc. at 11 Bella Road in Heath, Mass.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I.
Bill, I.
Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Joe, I.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. I appreciate it, as does my client.
Thank you.
All right, and I would entertain a motion to open, to continue the public hearing for VYBZ, Inc. for an application for marijuana license or marijuana facility at 11 Bella Road in Heath, Mass.
Salute.
Roll call vote?
Bill, I.
Doug, I.
Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Joe, I.
Okay, so maybe we could have VYBZ, Inc. speak up and say hello.
Hey, this is Joe Gordheimer, and Doug, it is pronounced Vibes. It's kind of a, you know, cool name, but.
Yeah, got it. Got it, all right, Vibes.
I just want to let you be cool, too, that's all.
Yeah, I haven't been cool for like the last three meetings now.
I think it's been the last 20 years, Doug.
No, I used to be cool.
I'm sure you were, but it's been 20 years.
We all grow out of it.
All right.
Everyone should ask Joe questions about his name, though. That should be there.
Yeah.
All right, and Joe, would you like to add anything?
No, I just, I just really enjoy interacting with you folks, and every time I've come over to the farm and, you know, met the community, I just loved it, so looking forward to this.
Great.
Okay, and from the public, I see no more hands. Oh, I see Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
I just wanted to ask, since we're rolling through this, we have four groups. My assumption in listening is that everybody's going to do exactly the same thing. My assumption in listening is that everybody's gonna do exactly the same thing. But I haven't heard everybody say that. Are all four groups thinking of processing in the same way, thinking of, uh, you know, any cha... Will there be any differences at all amongst the four groups?
Let, let me, let me try and help. So, uh, th- these are four separate companies, I happen to be compliance counsel for all of them, so I've had these discussions. E- every one of them, you know, will cultivate, they will all use some slightly different methods, I'm sure. Uh, they are ultimately, you know, in a competitive environment. And so, you know, they will all cultivate, they will all process, but I wouldn't be surprised if some of them decided to, uh, make edibles, brownies, for example, and another one decided not to do that, they want to focus more on vaporizers, or another one, uh, wants to focus on, you know, some other type of product. They are, after all, you know, competing, uh, against each other, against the rest of the industry in Massachusetts. So they may have some slightly different ideas, but, but the basic concepts are the same. Product manufacturing, extraction, there are some different methods, but one way or another, you're trying to get oil out of the plant. Uh, but in terms of, you know, how that works, uh, with the environment, et cetera, there's really not a, uh, much of a difference, it's really all just confined to their individual building. Um, and, and, you know, that, that's where those processes happen.
And Phil, if I could just say one other thing there, um, you, the, the, really, there's a, there's a big deal in which genetics you bring, so mostly, when you look at the plant, they all look the same, but, um, when, when the market kind of chooses, um, cannabis, um, there are many different types of strains, and so, you know, I think I happen to have the best, so I'll use mine. I mean, I have the coolest name, I have the coolest strains too, so it's, that's kind of how I roll.
Okay. I'd just like to state for the record that Alchemy has better than BYBZ.
I don't think we all need to weigh in on that, but we appreciate your...
All right. Any more serious comments?
Yes, Sue, Sue, wave your hand on.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sue.
Quick question.
Wait, 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 I got it.
No, you just muted. There you go.
I'm sorry. A quick question, you said you're gonna make edibles, maybe, um, gummy bears, uh, brownies, um, from your own kitchen?
It, it would be, i- if they go that route, it would be fro... They would, uh, have to create a kitchen, uh, in, in their facility, in their building.
Okay.
Secure facility.
Yeah, and, and that is heavily regulated, again, it's not, it's not the, the planning boards, you know, per due to decide that.
Okay.
So, okay, anybody else? Okay, I would entertain a motion that we close, or we, yeah, we close-
Doug, you've got something in the chat you should read.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Sheila. It's, uh, it's, this is from Lenny. Hey, Lenny, would you like to, uh, just read your question?
Yeah, there's a couple of questions. So, um, I was curious to know if there are any pesticides used in the growing of the product, or pesticides used to keep rodents away? What do you do if wildlife, um, start to impact, um, the growth of, of growing there? And, um, you know, do you use any means at all to deter wildlife?
So, I, I can, I can answer that, because we've gone through that. They are not allowed, the, the, the rules about what chemicals they can use are very, very strict from the state, from the Cannabis Control Commission. They cannot use, they have to use organic materials, and there's a, they have to have a, a very serious, um, fence and, uh, monitoring, um, so they, they're not gonna have, um, deer getting in there. So this is basically gonna be the most well-protected garden in Heath, I can assure you. In fact, I wish I, I wish I had this fence around my garden, well, maybe I'll talk to them about that when they're bringing the fencing in. Um, I, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to take your question lightly, Lenny, is that answer your questions?
Uh, yeah, I guess so, it sounds like they're, they're not allowed to use anything, and, uh, it's the fence that's gonna protect the product, and, uh, so there, there wouldn't be any, um, you know, unusual, um, you know, action on wildlife at all.
Right. And they, and they are in discussion with the Conservation Commission, um, and, and Bill Luttrell is a real tough guy, he is not gonna, uh, let anything bad happen, um, environmentally, I promise you.
Yeah, we, we like Bill a lot, so we were, we're working with him and, um, and very much we want to make sure it's a, it's a very- A very responsible farmer.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Vibes Inc. at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Massachusetts.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Doug I?
Bill I.
Joe I.
Peter I.
Okay. So that concludes the public hearing part of our meeting, we're still in our, um, uh, planning board meeting, so, uh, are there any, um, final comments from the planning board? At this point?
Relating to the, uh, the public meeting or just other topics?
No, no, we can't, we, we cannot talk about other topics, I know I had a, I had one agenda, um, which I sent to you guys, which had a few other things, but they weren't printed on the posted copy, so we can't talk, but they were just minor things, but we can't, we can't do minutes and all that stuff, because I didn't put it on the paper copy, which is the, the one-
That's fine.
-that we have to post. So, no, I, I'm, I'm asking if there's any more discussion, uh, before we potentially vote? Um, let me do the planning board first, and then I'll, and then I'll open it to everyone. And, all right, go ahead, Sue.
Thank you, I'm, I missed out on, uh, the Vega Cannabis. Uh, Mark James was the representative, but I didn't hear who the farmer was.
Joe Gordhammer.
Gord. No, I thought that was the other one.
Yeah, for Vega, it's Greg Yatoma.
Greg, can you spell his last name for me, please?
Sure, it's Y-A-T-O-O-M-A.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else have anything final to say that we... Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
I was just wondering, I wanted to ask Sheila if, uh, uh, these properties, uh, will be eas... easy or convenient to connect to the broadband system?
Yeah, no problem, um, 11, um, already has a, a drop, and so-
Okay.
There, there'd be no problem.
And it'll be adequate to serve all four businesses?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But I can tell you that, you know, broadband, uh, the MLP is, uh, assuming this is four different companies, four different drops, so, you know, we need to talk with them about where, with facilities, need, need the, the, um, actual connection and so on, so forth, so that is yet to be discussed, and I'm glad to get the names here that, uh, people I can talk with about how to, how to make that work out well for everyone.
Good, excellent, thank you.
I apologize, Tom, uh, do you have her contact info? Uh, did you guys exchange info on the call here, or previously?
No, I have not.
I'll put it in the chat.
Sheila, thank you very much, appreciate the help.
All right. Well, I would entertain a motion that we vote on, we have to do these all one at a time, um, but I would entertain a motion to vote on the application by Alchemy Cannabis Inc. at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Mass.
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, Doug I?
Bill I.
Bob I.
Joe I.
All right, actually, I have to, I have to ask a question, um, of the board, do we need to open it to discussion and then vote, or do we, can we just vote at this point? Do you know?
Well, I think you already did open it to discussion, you asked if anyone had any further comments.
Right, I just wondered if we had to vote, um, do you know, Sue? Can we just vote now?
Um, I believe that you, you, well, number one, you voted to open the, um, you didn't vote to, I, you didn't vote to approve their, their application, and I'm not sure if that's what you intended to do.
We, we- Well, we open, we, I think what we have to do is open up the vote and then have discussion, and then actually vote to approve.
Okay.
Doug, this is Gloria.
Yeah.
Once you do the, the first mo... No, you make the motion, someone seconds it, then you open it up for discussion, if there is any, then you vote.
Okay. If there's one, one discussion, okay, so is there any discussion by the board on Alchemy Cannabis Inc.?
Have a quick question.
Yep.
Were there any stipulations that we talked about at the last meeting that we needed to make on the special permit? Such as, I think one of them was like, uh, making sure that they have a meeting with the community members to make sure that the odor control is truly controlled and that they're not disturbed by it.
Um, we, if we, uh, if we want to add stipulations now is when we would have to do it, and then we would vote on it. So, um, so we could add a stipulation that they have a discussion with, um, you know, maybe we make it an, an annual Zoom meeting with, uh, the public to voice concerns. Bill, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just, uh, in reading through our bylaw, there are restrictions on noise and, and odors and that sort of thing. Do, I, my recollection was that noise and odors shall not, uh, extend beyond the buil- building itself. Do we, do we need to make that formal, or I, I'm not sure if we need to go through every item?
Well, we went, we, we actually talked about that at the last meeting, and they listed the, um, the, the remediations they do for specifically smell, and, um, that they had, they can mist, they can do different things. And so, I, I, I think, um, if, I mean, I think that's the, it seems like they're doing enough things, like cutting the whole plant down and bringing it inside to process it. It seems to me like they're, they're, uh, they have a plan for how to remediate the smell, and, and the, they do have an air filtration system, carbon filter system in the building, so anything that happens in the building will have no smell.
Okay. Again, I apologize for not being at the first meeting of the, uh, public hearing, but, uh, so, as we think about each of, each of these items, um, the fencing, the odors, the noise, the, you know, traffic, uh, parking, all, all of the things that go into our approval, do we need, are we satisfied as a board that all of those have been discussed and, and we are approving their plan? Is that what we're doing right now?
Yes, we, yeah, we, a- at least I have, we have talked about all the things you just listed, and I am satisfied personally that, um, that they're addressing all of those things. Some of the things, like I said before, we, we do not vote on the community host agreement, we don't vote on how much money we get, we don't vote on who and how it goes, you know, so, so, yeah, I think, I think that, um, yeah, I think they've satisfied that for me. I'll let the other board members chime in, Bob? Bob, and then Peter.
Me too. First meeting.
All, all I was, all I was gonna say, Doug, is presumably if there are, um, provisions and regulations in the bylaws, any special permit that we should approve would also contain, you know, some sort of, um, reference to those to say you, you have to abide by all of the bylaws, I mean, that's kind of part of the deal, isn't it?
Yeah, and there's, then after we vote on this, assuming we, we, um, we grant the application, then I have to write up the application and, and I can put in, um, wha- whatever we need to, we need to put in there, but we have to do, we have to decide that now at this open meeting. So do we want to put in a stipulation that says there will be a, you know, a public forum once a year, a Zoom meeting where people can express their opinions and how things are going?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Hey Doug, do you mind if I speak up a- about just the process and how this, there's checks and balances along the whole way?
Yep.
Uh, from the building department, from the planning and zoning, from the, the, the state of Massachusetts, that we have to, it's our burden to prove that we're gonna meet these code requirements, we don't go to the next step if it doesn't happen, so any concerns with regard to any of the, of these things, you're, there's no way that you can put in whatever you want in this meeting, and it doesn't mean anything. What matters is when the building department reviews our drawings, and they say, "You can't do it because of this," or, you know, uh, the, the planning and zoning, no, this doesn't meet our ordinance or bylaw.
Right.
We can't get beyond that without us doing our job and giving you the things that your, uh, government officials, uh, are, are, are doing their jobs for, so, like I say, a lot of this, I, I get your concerns and I understand, but, like you say, there's already people that are doing this, that have jobs in the state and local levels that are making sure we do what we're supposed to do, sorry for that, thank you.
And just to give more specifics around the, the CCC, obviously, these are, you know, the specifically smell, by way of example, is something that every community's focused on, and the CCC is very focused on that as well, and they're doing, you know, very, uh, regular inspections on, on those issues and other issues, so there are safe, I think the point Tom's making is there's safeguards already in the system, you know, for, for the town of Heath, for the residents, you know, by the CCC and, and by others, uh, by other authorities.
Well, let, let me ask you this, um, would it be difficult for you to have, like, one meeting a year, one Zoom meeting where the public got to weigh in and say, "Here's how we feel about how it's going"?
No, no problem at all, Doug, I, I actually think that's, that's a, a good thing, and I encourage that. I- in addition, which I think hits more at the heart of the issue, I know this is not the forum to discuss HCA, but there are multiple stipulations in the HCA where if there's a smell issue, this is how it's addressed, and then, you know, in, in 15 days, if that doesn't happen, then this happens, it's very spelled out in the HCA. Um, but yeah, look, I, I'm, I'm speaking for Alchemy here, um, the others can speak for themselves as well, but I, I'd be totally into a, a year-end review or yearly review.
Well, why don't you, um, why don't you just have as a condition that, uh, the company will come to, uh, a, a planning board meeting that's noticed to the public, uh, once a year at the planning board's discretion to discuss, uh, these issues?
Uh, that's a great idea. That's a great idea, that's, that would be fine with me, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, I think I saw Cal Carr, a little note from him flash on the screen a, a few minutes ago, uh, relative to the site plan review, and I was assuming that the board probably already has reviewed the site plan. Was it approved, and, uh, should, if not, shouldn't it be approved before we issue, approve a special permit?
Um, we, we did put the site plan up, um, we did it at the last meeting and at this meeting, um, and we, and again, when we look at that, if they, they can't put a building in the wrong spot, because this, the furcogs will, will not let them do that.
The building commissioner.
The building, the building, they can't get a building- The building, the building, they can't get a building permit to put a building where they're not allowed to put it.
Yeah.
So, and, and the, the, the drawing, which I sent to you guys today, shows you the setbacks, and it, and they have road frontage, they have setbacks, they have driveways marked on there, the buildings, the hoop houses, the boundaries of each farm, so, so I'm, I'm satisfied that the, that the site, that that actual drawing, I don't know that we have to vote on the drawing, if we're voting on the permit.
It's really just site plan review. And, and I, I, you guys aren't fine with that, I am.
Well, let me ask Gloria, you still, yeah, Gloria, what, what are your thoughts on, on that, you've had a lot of experience with the?
On the site plan?
Well, do we have to vote separately on a site plan, or do we just vote on the application?
Well, it says you need to review it. And you just did review it, I mean, if you want to be safe, vote on it, I mean, just cover all bases.
All right, so, so we could vote on, for each, for each one, we'll vote on the site plan review first, and the application second.
That sounds good.
That sound good?
That sounds good.
All right. Okay, so. Any, any other discussion on Alchemy Cannabis Inc.? Seeing no hands and hearing no voices, I would entertain a motion that we approve the site plan review for Alchemy Inc., Cannabis Inc. at 11 Baylor Road in Heath.
All moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I?
Bill, I.
Joe, I.
Sorry. Okay, we got it all. All right. And having approved the site plan review, I would entertain a motion that we approve the application by Alchemy, Alchemy Cannabis Inc. at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Massachusetts.
All moved.
So moved, application for a special permit.
Application for a special permit.
Yeah, so moved.
Seconded.
Roll call vote, please, Doug, I?
Bill, I.
Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Okay, so that passes. Or that is granted, so I would entertain a motion that we go into discussion about, to, a discussion to vote on True Cannabis Inc.'s application for a special permit for marijuana facility at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Mass.
All moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Doug, I.
Peter, I.
Joe, I.
Okay, so, discussion on True Cannabis Inc. specifically. Seeing no hands, I would entertain a motion to to approve the site plan for True Cannabis Inc. at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Mass.
All moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I?
Bill, I.
Joe, I.
Peter, I.
Okay, and having approved the site plan review for True Cannabis Inc., I would entertain a motion that we grant the special permit for marijuana facility by True Cannabis Inc. at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Mass.
All moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Doug, I?
Bill, I.
Bob, I.
Joe, I.
Peter, I.
Okay, so, True Cannabis Inc. is approved, and I would.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to, I would entertain a motion that we go into discussion about voting on the special permit by, by Vega, Vega Cannabis Inc. for a marijuana facility at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Mass.
All moved.
Second.
All in favor, Doug, I?
Bill, I.
Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Joe, I.
Okay, any discussion specifically for Vega Cannabis Inc.? Seeing no hands, I would entertain a motion that we approve the site plan for the marijuana facility by Vega Cannabis Inc. at 11 Baylor Road.
All moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Doug, I?
Bill, I.
Bob, I.
Joe, I.
Peter, I.
Okay, having passed, having accepted the site plan for Vega Cannabis Inc. at 11 Baylor Road, I would entertain a motion that we approve the application by Vega Cannabis Inc. for a marijuana facility at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Mass.
All moved.
Second.
Roll, roll, roll call vote, you'd think this would get easier, a roll, roll call vote, please, Doug, I?
Peter, I.
Bob, I.
Bill, I.
Joe, I.
One more time.
Thank you, everyone, on behalf of Vega Cannabis and Greg Yatoma.
You're welcome, Mark.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to go into discussion about the application by Vibes Inc. at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Massachusetts for a marijuana facility.
All moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I?
Bill, I.
Bob, I.
Joe, I.
Peter, I.
Okay, does anybody have anything specific that they'd like to talk about Vibes Inc.? Seeing no hands, I would entertain a motion that we approve the site plan for the application for Vibes Inc. for marijuana, marijuana facility at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Mass.
All moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I?
Bob, I.
Peter, I.
Joe, I.
Okay, having approved the site plan for Vibes Inc. at 11 Baylor Road for a marijuana facility, I would entertain a motion that we approve the special permit application for a marijuana facility by Vibes Inc. at 11 Baylor Road in Heath, Mass.
All moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I?
Bill, I.
Bob, I.
Joe, I.
Peter, I.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, Joe.
All right, so, thank you, guys, it's, it's been real, you've, you've been, you've made it, you've made it kind of easy, actually, it wasn't, I, you've, I appreciate all your help, everybody, and I think that's all we gotta do.
Thank you, Doug.
Does anybody else want to throw anything out?
Appreciate everybody's time, the planning committee and everyone that attended, appreciate everybody's work on this.
Okay.
They do have one question.
Doug, is there a written decision that comes out, or how does it work?
Yeah, I have, I now have to do a written decision. And I will, I will put in the wording that that you guys, that the companies, well, there's four different written decisions, and each one, I will add that they will come to a meeting of the planning board, which will, it'll be on the agenda, and everyone will, that, that's a really good, that was a good, that was a good mechanism to do this, because we can have a planning board meeting, it can be on there, and anybody concerned can have a voice, and, and be able to say something.
I think it's great, looking forward to the annual meeting with all my neighbors.
That will, that will go.
Best of luck to all of you.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
May you all be very successful.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
From your lips.
All right, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
All moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Doug, I?
Bill, I.
Joe, I.
All right.
Okay.
Have a, have a great night, everyone, thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you, everyone.
Well done.